I call the September 23 meeting of the Potts Grove School Board to order. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. Roll call, let it be noted that eight of the nine board members are present. Ashley is not here at this time. Agenda item two, there'll be an executive session at the close of the school board meeting tonight. The topic for the executive session is personnel and safety. Go back with roll call and let it be noted that all nine members are now present. Agenda item three, presentations and recognition and awards. We have two presentations tonight. The first is by Mr. Tom Kelly from Zeswitz Music. Tom? It helps people hear you that way.
Fair enough, fair enough. Good evening. On behalf of Zeswitz Music, I'm so excited to be here once again to present the Potts Grove School District, the Best Communities for Music Education Award. I come before you not as an education representative from Zeswitz, but coming to as an ambassador for the NAMM Foundation. NAMM, National Association of Music Merchants, started this particular program 26 years ago, giving school districts across the country the opportunity to document what they're doing in the world of music, performance opportunities, rehearsal spaces, and by the good graces of the administration and the wonderful staff that is behind me, they are excellent. Working with them on a weekly basis, I get to know that pretty intimately, and they have the students' best interests at heart, and they do a phenomenal job. I don't know if you came in, you saw the marching band feverishly working out there, which comes with their own accolades. Ms. Sierra Floss, a state champion last year?
Yeah, so two years ago, we won states last year. We placed third in a higher division, and this year, we are ranked first in the state.
So... But we also have general music teachers here as well, because we all know that if they don't have a positive experience doing "I'm a Little Teapot," or using boom whackers in the classroom, they're never going to get to band chorus or orchestra. A little scope and sequence about this program that started 26 years ago. It's a rather lengthy application process, 32 or 33 pages of a lot of detailed questions that Mrs. Hyde had the wonderful opportunity to fill out. And once those applications are completed, they're reviewed by a third party. The NAMM Foundation does not review them. The University of Kansas does. Now, just to give you an idea, there's over 14,000 school districts in the country, and Potts Grove was one of just over 1,000 to get this particular accolade. So, I mean, unbelievable job. This is your number, what, in a row?
Six.
Number six in a row. Now, again, just because you get it one year, it doesn't necessarily mean that you get it the following year. Again, that's why it's evaluated by a second or third party, if you will. But again, the support that they get continuing, the parents that get their kids to and from rehearsals, and it really, it's a community effort, and I'm honored to be here for Potts Grove School District. So, on behalf of the NAMM Foundation, congratulations, Potts Grove School District, on a job well done. I do have a placard here to present, and it says, "We congratulate you, Potts Grove School District, for outstanding support of music education, enriching the lives of children, and advancing student achievement." Music makes you smarter. Music makes you smarter. If you start looking at the SAT scores and the PSSA scores of those students that are involved in music in some way, shape, or form, you'll find that their test scores are higher. So, yay, thank you.
Before we let you go, we'd like to at least, we do have seven of our musicians here, our music teachers here, and they truly are outstanding in some of my favorite places to stop by when I am in buildings. Megan Aki, K2, General Musics at Rocks and West. Heather Hodgson, 3-5, General Music Chorus Lower. Kristen Hyde, Band and Orchestra at Lower, and she's also our Music Department Chair. Rachel Skibyshevsky, did I get that right? All right. Okay. Middle School Band. Allison Trout, Middle School, General Music and Chorus. Will Einhorn, Middle School and High School Orchestra. Amy McMahon, High School Choir. And Ellie Zarafos, High School Band. So, thank you for coming out, and appreciate everything you do. Yeah. Normally, I would like to take a picture. I'm not... You have everybody on camera? The whole team? Okay. Oh, great. Yeah, I didn't see you shake. Could we get a picture somewhere?
Yeah, I was gonna do it off.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you to our Music Department and the great teachers who are there. Thank you. This is another example of a small yet mighty school district with the quality of music education that's on here. Second presentation for the evening is from PFM Financial Advisors, who is presenting information on funding sources for the athletic stadium.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm Jamie Doyle from PFM Financial Advisors, independent financial advisor to the school district, and you should each have a hard copy of my presentation before you. If we turn to the inside cover, which is page number two, I always like to start off talking a little bit about interest rates and market conditions. And what you'll notice on this page, this is the B-Vow curve, which is a tax-exempt index. You, as a school district, get to borrow on a tax-exempt basis at a lower rate than any of us can borrow on our car loans or home mortgages. And the beauty of that is, on an investment side of things, you get to invest at a taxable rate, at a higher rate. So, that's important in the current market environment. So, this is three snapshots of this same tax-exempt index. The top snapshot shows us we're currently at the blue line. So, short-term rates at which you invest, I'll call that year one, are still slightly above, but right on historic averages for the most part. And then you can see the blue line dips down. The yield curve's still a little bit inverted in those early years. And then it slopes upward and is pretty much on the long end of the curve, right on historic averages. So, that's good news on both fronts, the investment front as well as the borrowing front. If you look at the middle snapshot, again, same index going all the way back to 1993 to give you a more historic perspective. And most importantly, that bottom snapshot, if you look at the far right-hand lower corner, you can see the line drops down like a cliff, almost, drops off a cliff. And that's a function of leading up to last week's meeting of the Federal Reserve Committee, the market tries to anticipate what the Fed's gonna do with short-term rates, and it anticipated correctly. The Fed decreased short-term rates a quarter percent last Wednesday, and you can see now the line, there's not much of it, but it's kind of flat across as the market tries to anticipate what will happen at the next meeting in six weeks. So, that's all good news for the numbers we're gonna look at in a minute. If you turn to page three, we're gonna look at analysis for an $8,995,000 potential borrowing for the proposed stadium project. And in bullet three, no news here, new news, I should say, that you haven't heard from me before. The IRS doesn't just let us go borrow at these attractive tax-exempt rates because they're attractive. You have to have reasonable expectations. Those are the key words, that you can spend 85% of the proceeds within three years, which sounds like, if you proceed, that that will not be a problem. The second prong of the test is that you have reasonable expectations, that you plan to enter into a substantial binding obligation within six months of settlement to spend at least 5%. Doesn't mean you have to have it spent, just means that you're getting close to that contractual obligation point. And then the third prong of the test is just that you proceed with due diligence. In bullet four, this would qualify for a small issuer exception because it's less than the $15 million calendar year limit. And what that means is, if you're able to invest at a rate higher than the borrowing rate, which you can right now, it means you get to keep that positive spread, or the technical term for it is positive arbitrage. So, anytime you can invest at a rate higher than the borrowing rate, it's a little bit cheaper to use someone else's money than it is your own. So, that's an important consideration in the current market. You can ignore 4B. You don't need the time-based exception since this is under 15 million, what you may be considering. In bullet five, bank-qualified, that's the lowest possible tax-exempt interest rate that you can get, and that has a calendar year limit of $10 million. So, again, you would fall under this threshold and be eligible for the lowest possible tax-exempt interest rate. And finally, in that last section, if a reimbursement resolution would have value, that means, for example, if you were passing a reimbursement resolution this evening, you would be able to reimburse yourself from future borrowed proceeds for any capital expenditure, project expenses you had paid in the last 60 days, so it's retroactive 60 days, and it's forward-reaching 18 months. So, again, there can be a strategy to that if you start to have those early design kinds of invoices before a financing is in place. If we look at page four, you'll see your existing debt portfolio. You have three issues outstanding currently, the 2021, the 2021A, and the 2023 issues. And you can see, most importantly on this page, column 10, that your all-in running rate for debt service is about $4.78 million right now, and you can see that you have a drop-off in the 2029 fiscal year, another drop-off in 2030, 2031, and then another drop-off in 2033. The point being here, as we think about how you might structure new debt in your portfolio, you have a lot of flexibility and a lot of options because of those drop-offs. Not every Pennsylvania school district has a column 10 that looks as attractive as yours. As always, PFM continues to monitor your debt portfolio for refinancing opportunities. The good news and the bad news is, you have really low interest rates in your debt portfolio, so there's no refinancing opportunities at this time. If you turn to page five, you'll see the numbers we just looked at in the prior page in column three. So, if you do nothing, you'll continue to make the payments in column three each year. And what we're really talking about this evening is in the blue box. If you were to borrow $8,995,000, we would structure this as a pro-rata wrap, meaning in column four down below, the payments start off smaller, and then they increase in conjunction with the decreases in column three in your old debt portfolio, still resulting in an overall declining debt portfolio for the future. Again, trying to provide and preserve flexibility for the future for other capital needs the district might have. This would be a 13-year financing. So, again, keeping things fairly short and concise, but really, what's dictating the length is those drop-offs in your existing debt portfolio. So, you can see in column five, all-in, what your debt service would look like. We're being a little conservative. If you were having this sale today, you'd do a little better than this, but it's still fairly early on in the process. In column six, you'll see capitalized interest. So, instead of having the debt service affect your budget all in one year, capitalized interest is one-time money that can be used to phase the new debt service into your budget basically over two years, half in year one, which would be next budget year ending 2027, and the other half in fiscal year ending 2028. And that capitalized interest can come from a variety of sources. It can be from borrowed bond proceeds. It can be from interest in the construction fund. We don't really have a draw schedule yet, but once we get a draw schedule, you know, we'll be able to project the interest earnings in the construction fund. I looked this morning, a liquid rate at Pliggett this morning was a 4.3%. So, interest earnings in that construction fund can be pretty meaningful, and those interest earnings can be used toward this capitalized interest or the cost of a more phased-in debt service. If you look at the last page, page six, there's a sample motion for your consideration if or when you'd like to authorize the finance team to proceed and get the paperwork in order. As always, the finance team consists of myself as your independent financial advisor, Fox Rothschild as your bond counsel, as well as your local solicitor, and this would be a competitive internet auction, as is the method the district has historically used to incur debt. Excuse me. At the bottom of page six, you can see a sample timeline. Please note that everything says or later after it, but we wanted to bring this before you in case you would like to take advantage of your calendar year 2025 limits for the 15 and 10 million that we looked at back on the first bullet point page. So, this evening is an initial presentation to the board. If you were inclined to pass the motion above at your October 14 voting meeting, we could be back with said paperwork in order for your consideration at your November 11 voting meeting. That would be a parameters resolution, just a reminder as to what that means. You've passed lots of parameters resolutions in the history of the school district, but that gives you flexibility. That's the whole point of a parameters resolution. It means we can enter the market and lock in interest rates and have the sale on the best day possible, as opposed to being wed to a board meeting date, which might be once or twice a month and might not be the best day. If the parameters resolution is adopted on November 11, we can be ready to enter the market as early as November 12. And should that be the timeline that is selected, settlement would be roughly 35 days later on December 17. It's the settlement date that needs to happen within the calendar year in order to utilize this year's limitations. So, I know that's a ton of information. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time, but you are positioned very well, and your portfolio will continue to have a lot of flexibility for future needs of the district.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Jamie or myself with regards to the borrowing?
Based on the... So, this evening, the board is going to be voting on a agenda action to determine whether or not to move forward with the design phase of athletics and facilities renovation. That's the design phase. It's not voting on the entire project. With that in mind, drawdown on any of this wouldn't be, like, if the board decides to move forward with this, the draw schedule on this wouldn't be till February 27? Is that right? Is that fair? Yeah, like, what would the timeline look like for?
Yeah, you'd rather be designed.
Right. So, there's no urgency to lock in 2025 on this borrowing?
Not unless you want to use the $10 million limit for '25.
Right.
And then we can earn positive arbitrage.
Right.
The other thing I would add is that, you know, this likely is not enough to cover the whole project, and so the intention is a cash contribution from the school district. So, you know, as long as the project's gonna be at least $8,995,000, you're within the limitations, within the three-year spend down and the six-month, which, again, are just reasonable expectations, but, you know, everything I've heard so far, you are well within that.
Okay, so, what is the benefit of doing it, of moving forward with it this year versus next year, if we don't really need the money until next year? I understand the $10 million kinda. I'm not a financial advisor, so...
So, this would utilize your 2025 calendar year limits, leaving you a clean slate for 2026 or 2027, you know, if other things are on the horizon. This also, as I mentioned when we were looking at the interest rate page, right now, you know, and I expect it to go down. Investment rates are at 4.3% liquid right now, but I expect them to go down as the Fed has just decreased short-term rates a little bit. But right now, you know, your borrowing rate would be well under 4%. So, the spread, the difference between the borrowing rate and the investment rate is interest that you can earn and put toward the project, you know, whether it's to put it toward that capitalized interest number I mentioned, or, you know, whether it's to just downsize the amount you ultimately end up issuing, putting it toward the project.
But what is the $10 million limit?
That's just...
Like, what is it? Can we only borrow that much per year? Or how is that to our advantage if we take?
Sure.
If we do it now?
That's just an IRS calendar year limit to get the lowest possible tax-exempt rate, and you haven't used much of your $10 million calendar year limits. You've used some of it. That's how we arrived at the $8,995, because you've done two leases. So, you know, these limits are kind of use it or lose it to get this very lowest tax-exempt rate.
And just...
Great questions.
Just for background, we asked Jamie to come here because we felt it was important for you to see at least a draft of what a particular borrowing schedule might look like while you're considering the renovations. The other thing to be aware is, we do have additional projects that we've talked about that are going to be in the fairly near term. The middle school is turning 26 this year, and we do have some investment at lower that needs to happen. And again, that would be something that, in previous meetings, we actually had Jamie kind of wrap around some debt, looking at multiple borrowings to accomplish all those things. So, that's why she's here, and I thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you mind pushing the button on the microphone to turn it off? Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
This moves us to agenda item number four, which is public comment. Couple comments. It's the practice of the board to have two public comment sections at each board meeting. The first is restricted to items that appear on the agenda, which happens next. The second public comment is at the end of the meeting to hear comment on items that are not on the agenda. The reason for this is so that the board can hear information, opinions, concerns about agenda items prior to deliberating and/or voting, or voting on those items, to take care of agenda business first, and then to look at non-agenda items. The reason I say this is we've asked people to give us the sheets, there's an audience here tonight for comments you want to make. All of the comments we've seen are related to behavior and safety issues.
We do have one.
We have one now that is not, that is different behavior and safety issues, which would be the second part of the agenda. That means that the majority of people commenting were asking for your patience as you sit through the meeting to wait for that time. We in no way want to imply that one is more important than the other, but the thinking there is to do the business of the board, the agenda first, and then to pick up, not that they are new items, because they're not, but to pick up other issues that we will explore either as a board on an agenda item or through executive session in the future. Does that make sense? We try as much as we can to move through this, thank you. And I hope you say we did well at the end, but it just depends on the amount of time. And I realize that means some of you are staying here longer than you want. The positive for us is it's nice to have an audience. The other piece of this, it's also a practice of the board to not comment on public comment, but to listen... but to listen and reflect on what's being said to allow that to go into our brains to hopefully influence our thinking about items we may vote on later. I ask you to not assume that quietness here means lack of caring or lack of understanding, but we remain quiet, just listen and move through those, and then when it comes time for us to deliberate or debate, we do that. We just choose not to do it here. But again, please understand that our quietness does not mean we don't have opinions. We do. There's typically nine different ones, or don't have concerns in terms of that. So, I ask for your understanding there. So, we start first with public comment on agenda items. We have Tom Capi...
Tina.
Tina Capiello.
Right to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Tina. And we ask that comment be limited to about two minutes, that you introduce yourself, name and township. And again, you'll hear us, you'll see us listening, but we typically don't respond. Tina?
My name is Tina Capiello. I am a taxpayer in Upper Pots Grove Township. I am also an employee at the high school, listening to the presentation about the football stadium. And I know you can't answer questions, but from where I work, with all of the HVAC system problems with the heat and the AC and the science wing, as Dr. Finnerty said, one of the schools is over 26 years old. I think there's more important imperative things that need to be done with that 3.6 million or 13.6 you're planning on spending on a football stadium that we really don't need. I know we want to be part of, you know, the up and coming, and we want people to look at our school and go, oh, wow. But right now, we have a lot of other things that that money needs to be spent on, and I really think that the football stadium could wait a few years until all the schools are repaired and the teachers aren't having to work in extremely hot environments or extremely cold environments. You also have safety things that are coming up later that people are going to discuss that money needs to be spent on. So, I just think, I think the taxpayers need to be more aware that this is happening, and I don't think a lot of taxpayers are aware of the stadium. And I don't think that's fair since we're the ones that flip the bill eventually. That's all. Thank you.
Tina, thank you. I guess that applause was for Tina. Any other comments in the room on any of the agenda items on tonight's agenda? And again, name, township, and please keep it within two minutes.
Hi, Ellie Zerfis. I'm the band director. I don't know if this is allowed or not. I don't live in Pots Grove, but I do work here. Okay, great. Just want to make sure. So, I wanted to speak on the football stadium renovations. As somebody who works here and spends a lot of time working with students here of all grade levels from nine through 12 and as well as our middle school, the stadium renovation is not just something that makes us look good here at Pots Grove, but it's something that brings the community together. If I think about the amount of times that our band has had to utilize parking cones because we rehearse on a parking lot, or the amount of times that vehicles have been on our lot, or the amount of times that we run into, maybe a soccer game is happening and we can't rehearse because that space is taken up, it really puts, even though we're doing amazing things, a lot of this program at a detriment because we don't have the space to adequately rehearse. And because of that, it sets the program behind to what it could be, which I know is much better than what we are already putting out. There's been times that I've been reached out to by DCI drum corps, people that want to utilize our field for the weekend, and we can't because they are, it's a grass field. We don't want to ruin our facility. They're willing to donate $5,000 to the band just to use it for an overnight. There's been festivals that we can't even run that generates about $10,000 to $15,000 of profit that all the nearing, nearby school districts are able to run that we simply cannot because of our field situation. I think we're limiting our students of opportunities for programs and things here within the community that we're unable to do simply because of our field situation, not to mention that our parking lot, just to get to the lower end, is not ADA accessible.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other comment in the room on agenda items? I sound redundant. Name, township, and limit two minutes.
So, my name is Katie Copan. I'm a resident of Upper Pots Grove Township. I'm the parent of two children in the district, both athletes and both members of the music department, here tonight to express my personal support for making some of the proposed improvements to the Pots Grove Athletic Complex. It's so much more, if you look at the plans, than just a football stadium. Our student athletes and our student musicians work incredibly hard. They deserve facilities that match their dedication, talent and school pride. Modernized complex would benefit not only our sports programs, but it would benefit our music department as well. It would give our award-winning marching band somewhere to practice safely. As Ms. Zerfus said, practicing in the parking lot is, they're really having to deal with a lot of the traffic in and out with all of the other things that are going on. The athletic complex would also serve as a hub for community engagement, school spirit, future growth opportunities. It's about so much more than just athletics to me. It's about giving the students the tools they need to succeed both on and off the field. So, as a resident, a taxpayer and a parent, I urge you to support this initiative, help building something truly special for the Pots Grove community that I think will benefit our current students and generations to come. Thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items in the room? Any comments on agenda items online? Thank you. I have one request here for an agenda item that is non, for an item that is non-agenda related. It's again is behavior and safety, but there are family obligations. I'm looking to the board here. I am wondering if we should make an exception to our rule because of the number of people here tonight to be respectful for their schedules, to move forward with other comments, even non-agenda related, and then go back to business, which is different than what we usually do. I'm seeing a lot of head nods. I don't know if that's that need of... So, then, well, thank you. Thank you. That moves us. There is nothing else agenda-related. We're just going to pull from the pile here, from the names that are here, and ask you to come up. Again, we ask that you give your name, township, and please limit your comments to two minutes that you have here. Kelly Trusdale? Did I say that correct? Kelly?
My name is Kelly Trusdale, and I've been a resident of Lower Pots Grove for the past 16 years. All four of my grandchildren have attended the school district from kindergarten on. My oldest graduated 2024.
Kelly, pause just one second. The more you can move the mic closer to your mouth, it will swivel over. Excellent. If people online then can hear you better.
Okay. And I currently have three still in the district, one at middle school, one at lower, and one at Ringing. I'm the legal guardian and caretaker of the two youngest. Over the past several years, my oldest has expressed concerns and emotion regarding to my daughter and myself about increasingly aggressive, destructive and assaultive behavior amongst their peers in the school, towards property, other students and teachers, including an incident where a pregnant teacher was kicked in her stomach and a teacher was injured so badly she required surgery. Since school began this year, my youngest grandchild, Zade, who is six years old and in first grade at Rocks, came home regularly upset because a child in his classroom was becoming destructive daily and destroyed various items in the classroom, including a coveted lollipop tree. Two weeks ago, I was contacted by the school nurse and informed Zade was hit in the head with a large metal bookend by one of these children. Several children were assaulted that day and would need to be monitored, minding through the evening for possible concussion precautions. I myself am a nurse, so it was no problem. As you can imagine, I was quite upset by the situation. It was traumatizing enough for him to come home upset, but having to witness regularly in his classroom these situations, that was upsetting physically and mentally to be assaulted by a peer. School is a setting where he should feel safe to learn and that I should feel comfortable sending him to. I should not have to worry about what's going on in the classroom and maybe psychologically and emotionally upsetting or physically unsafe for my grandchild, especially in the first grade. This should not be normalized for any of these children or their teachers who are protecting them. I understand the district has been attempting to address these issues for several years now, especially at Rocks, and I have noted the effort and information the district has made available online. I appreciate it as every nuanced situation dealing with children, parents, legal requirements, funding, et cetera. I also understand research and evidence show children with disabilities, emotional and behavioral, have better outcomes when educated in the least restrictive environments that are appropriate and safe for themselves and others. Unfortunately, the district efforts thus far have fallen short on these children too. It's unacceptable that these targeted efforts to address behavioral concerns began years ago and still continue into the 25, 26 school year. A child is allowed repeatedly traumatize their classroom and even assault other students and teachers before something is done. Clearly, there are children who need higher support levels than available. Clearly, the teacher in dire need of more support and resources does not have this. The school needs to address these issues in a timely or fashion instead of allowing the classroom and instruction to be disrupted and chaos daily. And clearly, there needs to be a concrete plan to assist the children and teachers who are having to witness and endure these peer issues, repeatedly being traumatized by them and losing valuable learning time. Children cannot flourish to their full potential in an environment where they do not feel safe, and I can assure you, after being hit in the back and the head to the point of needing monitoring for a concussion, my grandchild does not feel safe. It is a problem that I am sure the entire school community would appreciate your further focus on. And I look forward to hearing most specifically how you plan on intensifying your efforts to keep our children and teachers safe as you attempt to support the children and their families who are struggling also. Thank you.
I don't want to be rude and cut people off when it runs over two minutes. We have a lot of comments. Just asking you to please keep your comments to about two minutes. Ashley is running a timer here, so when you hear that bell, that's the two-minute bell. So, if you could just either start talking faster or come to a conclusion with that bell, if that makes sense, and I appreciate your cooperation with that. Robert Biggio? Did I say that right?
Yeah. So, my name is Robert Biggio. I am a parent of a student at Ringing Rock, and I live in Upper Pots Grove Township. So, just to kind of reiterate on some of the points that she very well put, we have the Falcon Four, and everyone here knows it, and I wish to speak on the first and the last one. My child has been going to Ringing Rock. This is going to be his third year now, and each year, we have consistently heard reports of disruptive behaviors impacting classrooms, including students and faculty being struck, outbursts and other behaviors that impact, the very first of the Falcon Four, which is to be safe. I know firsthand of students being injured during these disruptive behaviors and no mention of it from the school to the parents of the injured child. I've also heard that faculty has been pressured to not speak up when these are happening and that there may even be fears of retaliation if they were to. This tells me that this is not a healthy, nor is it a safe environment for the teachers and students. I know the school has had changes over these last years, but this is something that cannot continue. The amazing teachers, support staff, students and parents deserve transparency, accountability, and to live up to the Falcon Four pledge of be safe. So, that brings me to the last of the Falcon Four, be responsible. So, I am here today asking for the responsible thing and formally requesting that the board perform a thorough investigation into this matter to determine what, how, why and who is responsible for the culture in the Ringing Rock building and maybe others, creating this environment of disruption, lack of transparency, because this is not living up to the expectations that we should all have for the amazing community that we have. If the faculty does not feel safe, heard and supported, how can we possibly expect our students to? At best, if we do this investigation, we will discover that we are doing everything we can to support our faculty and students, and if not, we will discover what our opportunity is that needs to be addressed, because I promise you, as you can see here today, this will not be the last. If these behaviors continue to escalate, the response from the community and the parents will as well. I thank you all. I appreciate your time, and I hope that you all deeply consider the words that we are going to be sharing tonight. Thank you.
Tina Capiello, Upper Pots Grove. I live in Upper Pots Grove. I'm a taxpayer first and an employee at the high school. I am here in support of the teachers and staff at Ringing Rocks. I worked there seven years ago. I was attacked from behind by my student. He took me to the ground by grabbing me around my neck and trying to strangle me. I was told that the video that was viewed was something out of a Cops episode, how violent the attack was on me. I suffered injuries to my back and neck, which today I still have problems with. To hear this kind of thing is still going on just blows my mind. I know it costs the district money to send these students to a behavior school, and there are a lot of Ts that need to be crossed. That brings me to the 13 million you feel is needed to upgrade our stadium. First, I find it unfathomable that with everything else this district needs and the taxpayers have no say, why not spend this money on a place for these students right here in our Sorry, I lost my spot. Hire the staff needed, provide these students with the correct services they are in need of, build a building of three to four classrooms that we, taxpayers, pay for, and use that money to hire the correct staff instead of having to pay an outside source to take these Our teachers and other students need to be protected at all costs. Those costs fall on the district, not the taxpayers. My tax money should be going to better the environment within all the schools and protecting everyone. I am asking my board, the people's board, think about what you would want if you were in these situations, being attacked by a child that you could do nothing about. The administration has not corrected this problem in seven years, and it seems it is stuck in a situation where they're not sure what to do now. Spend the taxpayers' money on your staff and students. We need that. Thank you for your time.
And I appreciate not only the concern, but suggested resolutions. Helpful. Laura McQuirkle? Did I say your last name correctly?
Yes, thank you. Laura McQuirkle, Lower Pots Grove, parent of a student at lower and Ringing Rocks. The mission of the Pots Grove School District is to educate The mission of the Potts Grove School District is to educate and inspire all students to excel as productive, responsible citizens and lifelong learners. Yet this is not occurring when many of our youngest learners are experiencing extreme, severe, and frequent behaviors. On page 14 of the Potts Grove Elementary School Handbook, it states, "The board finds that student conduct is closely related to learning. An effective educational program requires a safe and orderly environment." Right now, Rocks is unable to provide that to our children. How can we expect these kids to learn when they are on edge for their safety every day? I was here to speak to all of you last year in May, and I shared many potential solutions. Yet here I am again, less than a month into the school year, and the behaviors are even worse. Our dinner conversation tonight with my two children was not about the fun things they did. It was about me asking them if they could tell me what to do when a student near them is physical and aggressive, when to run, when to hide, and if they need to fight back. Is that something that you want to speak to your seven and 11-year-old children about at dinner? Just this year, multiple staff members have been injured and required medical attention. They have been slapped in the face, punched, kicked, scratched, and bitten in front of their entire classrooms of students. A teacher is in a sling, numerous students have been hurt, property has been damaged, lockdowns and evacuations have occurred due to unsafe aggressive behaviors, leaving children confined to their classrooms for extended periods of time. Despite all of this, the elementary division's discipline code is not being followed. It very clearly outlines levels of behavior with level four being the most severe. Examples of this include deliberately striking a staff member and extreme disruption to school programs. The procedures for these behaviors are not being followed, yet we wonder why the behaviors continue to escalate. Somehow our teachers, our amazing Rocks teachers, Lower teachers, all of you, thank you for everything. Somehow, they are being blamed for what is happening in these schools. It is not their fault. Every day, they show up and protect our babies when we can't be there to protect them and try to keep smiles on their faces for our kids. Most alarming is that these teachers are being told not to tell parents when our children are frightened, crying, and witnessing these injuries. Five-to-eight-year-old children. This is what we are talking about. Parents, the board, and our community as a whole is deliberately being kept in the dark. When someone is aware of these behaviors and no meaningful action is being taken, that is negligence. What will it take for this to be taken seriously and for our students and staff to be protected? Thank you for your time.
Hello, Leanne and Frank Graveney. We are Lower Potts Grove residents and have a son at Ringing Rocks and a son at the middle school. Dr. Finity is definitely knows us at this point. I'm not going to reiterate everything that was said because it's exactly what I would say here. I do, however, want to point out, and I quote from an email from Dr. Finity today, "We have some disruptive student behaviors. There is considerable misinformation making its way through our community." The first time we met Dr. Finity, you did not even acknowledge a problem. I had to have specific examples, dates, times, of everything that my son witnessed. The mental toll that he has gone through this school year already is insane, ridiculous, and not acceptable. We are sending our children to your school buildings daily. As soon as my student's teacher was able to give the students the space and opportunity to express how they're feeling in school, the floodgates opened. We were wondering for weeks what was going on with our child. Not eating, not eating his lunch or his snack, five or six nurses visits, doesn't want to go to school fearful, all of those things. And it wasn't until the space was made available by a trusting adult, which are the teachers in these buildings that are not getting the support that they need. That is when he was comfortable to let us know what is going on. My number-one job in this world is to keep my children safe. And the last thing I want to know is that my second grader is at a mid-second grade level, so don't worry his learning's not being interfered with. Anything you would like to say?
No, I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of comments that have come up here that have been extremely pertinent. My, I guess, one thing that's come up that really struck me and is something that my son said to me the other day was, you know, I asked him about why he's feeling scared to go to school, why he's upset at school, and he touched on a lot of the topics but also mentioned, "But you know what, Daddy? I'm fast. I can run away. I've got strong legs. I play soccer. I can kick. I can defend myself." And that, to me, is unacceptable. That's not how my son should go to school and feel on a daily basis. It's just not. He's there to learn. He's there to develop social skills. Period, end of story. I don't know, as somebody else asked, I don't know what it's going to take to wake things up here, but we're...
We're prepared to take things to the next level on our end. Thank you.
Frank and Leanne, thank you.
My name is Jim McDonald. I live in Upper Potts Grove. I am the father of two little girls that are both in Ringing Rocks. Both of their wonderful teachers are in attendance tonight. Sounds like I'm here to beat the same drum. Sounds like everybody in this room is here to beat the same drum. As I look at you on the board, I hope you take this seriously. I know some of your children. Hell, I am close with some of your grandchildren, and it comes from them as well. My five-year-old and my seven-year-old, they come home every day. The first thing they tell me, they tell me about the children in their class that hit other children with books. They tell me about the children in their class who are running barefoot up and down the hallway, and they just leave Room 40. Does anybody else in here know what Room 40 is? Because I hear about Room 40 every single day. Don't know what Room 40 is. I'm a son of an educator. My mother was a special education teacher. My mother's had her ribs broken, just like the lady in the back. She's now retired for that same reason. I don't want to lose half of these teachers in this room for the same exact thing, so I urge you to take them seriously. I urge you to address this. I too agree with the sentiment as far as the spending goes, but I am an athlete. I am still an athlete. I was there for youth night. That was absolutely incredible. My daughters are cheerleaders. I go to their other schools. I see Owen J. Roberts facilities. I see their facilities. Absolutely, an upgrade is needed to the facilities. But let's just allocate funds appropriately to each and every department, please. That starts with our educators. These are our future. These are our children. We need to treat these educators accordingly. We need to stand behind them. I will tell you this, my mother's last year before she retired, in her district, she had 42 resignations, three days before the start of school, because the board did not take them seriously. Imagine the strain that put on the school board. Imagine the strain that put on the school district. Imagine the detriment to the children. Then you can't get subs because word's out. I urge transparency. I get an email the other day about a medical lockdown in school. I don't know what a medical lockdown is. First thing I do, I call my mom. Mom, what's a medical lockdown? Do I need to go get the girls? My mom says a medical lockdown is when either a student or a staff member needs to be taken out by an ambulance. I was never conveyed that message. There was no follow-up why there was a medical lockdown. I think there should be more transparency. I think there should be more communication. This noise that you're hearing, it's going to grow. It is a dull word right now, but it will get louder and louder and louder. I am not an educator, but I promise you this, I will become an educator. I will educate myself through any avenue I can on how to correct this. I will educate my neighbors. I will educate my peers. I work at a local business. I will educate my customers. This is not going to go away, and I promise you, if one of my little girls comes home with that same story, I'm a problem. I'm a big problem. Have a great night.
Hello. My name is Eric Coronel. I have a daughter at Ringing Rock. She's in first grade. This is the first time that I've attended a school board meeting. I intended to speak about the experiences that she's had, that she's relayed to us regarding constant evacuations of other classrooms into her classroom or her classroom into other classrooms because of disruptive students. But obviously, many other people have already spoken about all kinds of things, including things apparently significantly worse than that. So I don't have a whole lot to add to it. And then I guess the main thing that I would want to say is to follow on to their points. Again, this is the first time I've attended a school board meeting, and I have every intention of continuing to attend them until I hear that this issue is being dealt with in a satisfactory way. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Eric, thank you.
My name is Sarah Krotowski from Lower Potts Grove Township, and I have two children in the district. I am here to express concerns about student and teacher safety at Ringing Rocks due to frequent disruptive, inappropriate, and violent behaviors. Last May, I had reached out to the board and the superintendent regarding similar concerns as my son's class and others were experiencing classmates throwing school supplies, kicking, hitting, name-calling, yelling and screaming in the classroom, and students disrespecting teachers, which impacted my child's ability to focus and feel safe at school last year. As I speak with members of our school community about how the start of their school year is going this year at Ringing Rocks, rather than hearing excitement or what their children are learning, I've heard sadness, frustration, as their children and teachers are being injured or witnessing violent behaviors consistently. Classrooms are being regularly evacuated. Students are throwing school supplies, including books, pencils, scissors. Desks are being flipped, chairs are being thrown, and children are being kicked and hit in the classroom by classmates. I understand that student behavior is complex and challenging to manage, but it is critical that consistent and effective disciplinary policies are being enforced to maintain a safe learning environment. It is evident that the current system is not working, not being enforced, and teachers do not have enough support. I respectfully request that the district review current behavior management practices and communicate with the community what steps are being taken right now to address these issues because basic safety needs are not being met.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to try to get through this without crying. So my name is Jessica, I'm from Lower Potts Grove Township, and I have five children, one in Lower, two in Ringing Rocks, and two that will be going to Ringing Rocks next year. So I'm talking about behavioral issues as well. My son has been dealing with it since kindergarten. He is now in third grade, so imagine four years of dealing with this. I've had meetings with the principals and the superintendent about these issues. There have been violent behaviors towards kids and properties in every class that my kids have gone to. Just imagine that as children that are so young that have to go through that every day that they have gone to school. They should not have to see or hear any of this behavior. There should be consequences for these kids' behaviors. My girls have to evacuate their class multiple times, which takes away from their learning. My kids have also been harmed by multiple students every year that they have started school. The amazing teachers that I have met along the way need support and help. Our kids should be learning and having fun, not worrying about other students' aggressive behavior in class. My kids are scared to go to class, and they love school. They talk about school all the time. That's all I hear from them. And now, they have changed. They are scared. They do not want to go to school. Every day they come home from school, they tell me all the horrible things that have happened the second that I pick them up. I also volunteer very often, and I am very busy with five kids, but I take the time to go and volunteer and help the school because I feel such a close bond to the school and the teachers that I have met. I am very involved, and my kids are my everything. My kids' days are disrupted by these kids, and their learning stops. No one except my kids are telling me any of this stuff that's happening in class. I have also thought about homeschooling them because of how scared they are. And like I said, my youngest two are four. They will go to kindergarten next year, and I might not even send them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Philip Connold. I'm a student of a child at Ringing Rocks. He's been attending there. I live in Lower Potts Grove. He's been there for the last three years. I echo a lot of the sentiments that I've heard from the other parents. There's highly disruption. I didn't go to public school myself, so this is my first introduction to this, and I'm alarmed personally at the disruption. I'm not as good at articulating as some of the other parents, but I express the same things as them. What I want to ask the board is, at what point does assault not become a classroom problem, become a legal problem? I will point to that we need to get the cops involved to the degree that there is assault happening. My child came home because hands were put around his neck and his body was shaking. Four days later, I asked him about the same incident, and he gave the same emotional response where his body was shaking because of the assault that he experienced. The teacher, the board, the district response was, he needs to do a better job at choosing his friends. And that was offensive to me. If he is not surrounded by these good people, how can he make those choices? I ask you for help. What is the board, the district, going to do about these problems? To the board, I ask, I say, when it comes to the re-up of Mr. Flaherty's contract, I would vote no confidence. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room who would like to make a comment? Just need your name, township, and two minutes again.
Hi, Jennifer Anuski, resident of Lower Potts Grove, and my son goes to Ringing Rocks and is now in second grade. Like everybody else said, there is, there's no question that there is definitely a large safety issue happening at the school. Not just that, but there is a massive lack of transparency and also downplaying of events. I want to know from the board, over the course of this year, what is going to be done so that my son is not getting strangled again with some other child's hands around his neck to leave red marks, with the nurse to just casually tell me, "Oh, but he was breathing, so he's okay." I want to know what's going to happen where he's not coming home with a nosebleed because he was punched in the face by another child. because he was punched in the face by another child, or no bruises because he was pushed from the back and sat on, and repeatedly hit where he couldn't get up by another student, and where the aids are, and if the staff is properly equipped to be able to handle these things. So I also want to know what is going to be put in place for any kind of threats that are happening, and what kind of investigations are gonna be done when there are students telling each other, "I'm gonna kill you", with the rise of school shootings and not knowing what these kids are going home to as well, and how we're gonna make sure that they're not gonna be coming into school with the same kinds of threats. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I had no intention on speaking tonight, but as I listened to all these fantastic parents that are coming out, Brianna Robinson, I teach at Rocks, and I'm also a resident in Potts Grove. All of my children went through Potts Grove. And the only thing I'm here to say is, what makes me sad is, three years, four years ago, we came, the teachers, meeting after meeting to say, "Hey, let's find a way to work through this." And meeting after meeting, the board sat here and listened, like, to your point, you don't make responses, but never did we hear anything after that from the board or put out to the public to say, "Hey, this is what we're looking at." And it's upsetting to me because some of these families are my families, and I see these kids crying in school. And we all are witnessing this, and I see my staff upset. And I just feel like, if the board would have listened years ago and started being involved in this, as I was told by one, "They don't need to come up there because they already know it's a problem." Like, these are the things that should have been addressed so we didn't get to the point where all of our families are feeling the way we are, because I will say it again and again, we are going to lose our families. They are going to leave Potts Grove. And that's not what I want. I love what I do, I love the students in my classroom, I love the people that I work with. Like, our job is to all be involved and all work together to try to find a way to make it better. And parents, to all of you that took the time to come out tonight, just thank you so much for taking care of us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Brianna. Anyone else in the room? Yes?
Hi, my name is Megan, and I have two students here at Ringing Rocks as well, one in first grade and one in second grade. Both of them, supporting piggybacking the same issue, have been coming home every single day. First thing off the bus is, what happened in school today? Who got taken out in restraint? Who flipped a desk? Who broke the lollipop tree? My daughter was going to the nurse because she was scared of someone in the classroom, scared to tell me that I found out later. Where's the transparency? It's, we need to be transparent with us. We need to know what's going on in the school. Not hearing it secondhand from our kids, from other parents at sporting events. It's all whispered down the alley at that point, I don't know. What, but we need to be transparent, what goes on in that classroom every day? I'm terrified to send my kids to school every day. I cry every day at 8:30 knowing they're getting on that bus, which another issue brings up is three kids to a seat on a bus. That's not okay. My son was falling off the seat numerous times. And we finally went to the bus driver, he made an adjustment, great, but this went on last year as well. Okay, how many other buses, how many other kids with three to a seat falling off? You know, I hope that something happens, because what others said, was it gonna take for something to happen? And it's scary in this world, and I'm terrified to send my kids to school. Thank you.
Megan, thank you. Anyone else in the room? Is there anyone online who wants to make a comment?
Behalf of the board, thank you for being here. I mean, it's, on one hand, it's, it's kind of sad that it took an army to say this. Your concerns are real, your concerns are serious, your concerns demand visible action. If I had an answer, I'd give it. The board will look at this seriously and hopefully find an action that resolves things quickly. I apologize that I don't know what to say more than that. I, I think the fact that you showed up, I appreciate the civility you showed in expressing your frustration, your anger, and your concerns. Is there anything anybody else wants to say before I, yes?
Can you commit to a follow-up?
When you say "follow-up," follow up with the, with the parents, with the group?
Concerns that have been expressed here today, and what the district and the board is going to do to address them. What kind of, I've heard, I'm new to the district, I've heard from other parents so far, this isn't the first time this has been expressed. And these type of discussions have been unanswered by the board. Today, I'm challenging the board to ask, what would you promise as a follow-up?
Here, Jim, right? Yes, there should be a follow-up. I am hesitant to say that it's, with the time on that. We have a executive session tonight to discuss safety. To say we'd be back tomorrow or something, but you, we deserve to have an answer or a solution, there should be some follow-up. I regret I can't give you something, or, I, I'd be making it up, Jim, if I gave you something more specific than that right now. There are nine of us, and we need time, ten of us. We need time for the ten of us to, to debate, to discuss this.
What is it that we need to debate?
Well, with all due respect, we realize that this is not a problem that can be solved tonight. None of us expect that. We are terrified parents, but we're also practical. But I do feel like there are measures that can be taken immediately to add more security, to add more people into the building, to keep our children safe. Can we heighten security? Can we have more individuals who are trained to be able to restrain students at weekends? It should not be just a couple of teachers who are trained to restrain students. And it's that kind of, we do feel like there can be actions that can be taken by tomorrow morning, calling additional supports to keep our children safe. Otherwise, frankly, this is going to turn into a much bigger and uglier issue if it cannot be guaranteed that our children are safe to go to school tomorrow.
Thank you all for coming out.
Is there somebody online that has their hand up or waving their hand, that's trying to speak?
Go ahead, Mr. D, Eric D.
I'm a resident of, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a father of a Lower Potts Grove student. You know, as a husband of a dedicated Potts Grove school district employee who's, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, tirelessly, tirelessly worked with exhibiting all matters of maladaptive behavior in both educational setting and, you know, parent emergency services. It's heartbreaking and deceptible that my wife feels unsafe in not supporting her environment at Ringing Rocks. Despite her expertise and compassion, she has endured unimaginable challenges. Getting concussion, being bitten, sexually assaulted, slapped. She's been subjected to unspeakable obscenities, including being called the C-word. Supporting students is her calling. She's driven by a passion for shaping young minds. Yet the absence of the adequate safety measures and institutional support undermines her ability to thrive. The current staffing levels are insufficient, leaving registered behavior technicians overwhelmed and unable to focus on students with the most challenging behaviors. I urgently call on Potts Grove School District leaders and policymakers to hire more staff, support non-crisis-level behaviors, enabling the staff to work effectively with students who exhibit these challenging behaviors. This will ensure that Ringing Rock students feel safe, supported, and empowered to learn in a nurturing environment. No educator should fear their physical or emotional well-being or feel abandoned in their efforts to create a positive learning space. It is critical to provide the resources, protection, and respect our staff's, staff to deserve so they can carry out their vital work with confidence and security. And I ask you guys, where's the leadership from the school? Why aren't they here speaking to you guys for resources? I want to hear from the leadership, and I just don't see it. That's, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, yes?
Yeah, I know that you're gonna be talking and discussing actions, that we don't expect, you know, in the next five minutes that there be an answer to this problem that has been, you know. It took a while for us to get here, we expected it's gonna take a little bit to get it fixed. But I would just ask all of you, if tomorrow, another teacher who was pregnant was hit in the belly, or another student had to be on concussion watch, or choked, or whatever, did you leave here today doing everything you could to try and prevent those types of things from happening as much as possible in the future? And that would be the challenge I give you guys. I understand you're not gonna be saying, "Hey, Tuesday of next week, we're gonna have this." But this is, there's this quote, "It'll be fine in the end, if it's not fine, it's not the end." This will be fine in the end, but as the parents, I can promise you, until it's fine, it won't be the end. We will continue to come back.
So again, I do want to thank you for,
no one expects you to come up with a solution to this problem today, or even tomorrow, or even probably next week. But I do think that one thing that you could do pretty much immediately is commit yourself to more transparency. I mean, many people have said that that's something that they object to, is the total lack of transparency. And that's something that you could just say you're gonna do right now. And I mean, you know, to address a comment that was supposedly made saying that there's a lot of misinformation in the community, well, the reason that that's happening is because of the total lack of transparency. If you don't want people to have to be spreading rumors or sharing information in that fashion, then you need to kind of take the lead and have a reliable, official source of information that people feel that they can trust, and then that won't happen.
If I can make a suggestion, is it Jim? Did I, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Jim was the one to let.
Bill, sorry. If, Jay, if you and Dr. Finnerty can get together with Bill and, and schedule that follow-up, I think maybe the, yeah. Bill, Bill is the one who requested it, okay? So I'm trying to make sure that it is followed through with, okay?
So, if I could finish what I was starting to say. So, one, thank you for coming out. We, we are a community, and, and your voice matters, and your participation in, in supporting our, our students, your children, matters. One of the things that, I tried to get, make sure I have everybody's name, because I do very much would like to talk to you individually so I can literally talk to you about your kid and your experiences, and what we can do to ensure that the arc of those experiences are positive. There are some things that we, that, and again, this, you're right, this is not a problem that we're gonna solve tonight, although we are approving another RBT tonight, so that is one more step that we're, that's happening tonight. We do have a, our Rocks team is meeting tomorrow. We have our first Act 80 Day, and they have an excellent agenda that they've created as a team to identify areas where we can, where it would support the student behaviors. And from that team, we hope to get some actionable ideas and, and make sure that we're supporting it. We also have an excellent new administrator, who's, who I have great belief in, and I think she's off to a great start. And I have the confidence of the Rocks team and of Ms. Myers to share with me and to, and the rest of the district about how we can further support a positive arc. So again, I, I do want to thank you, I do have everybody's name, and I will personally be inviting you to a, a meeting where we can talk specifically about your child and, and their experiences. Thank you.
I have just left my gain to come here, my name is Mia DeChico. I have,
There are people listening online, and it, they all, this gets recorded too?
Listening to this in the vehicle, I had to come. I'm gonna bring a little bit of a different perspective here for the people today. I have five children, one has already graduated, I have four here. I have two in Ringing Rocks. I am disgusted to hear that the teachers are told to keep their mouth shut about the behaviors going on in the school district, and they're getting smacked on the hand. Enough is enough. I am exhausted that I have befriended some of these teachers and that I have to hear throughout the town of what is going on in this district. It is not okay, hiring an RBT is not okay. Does it help? Sure. Here's the different perspective. My son is Jacob Leroy. My son had behavior issues back when he was in K through two, and he was in Mrs. Delp's class. He did not act okay in Mrs. Delp's class. And he's doing exactly what these parents are saying, that those kids who are hurting their kids. My kid got kicked out of Ringing Rocks. He was no longer allowed to attend because of his behaviors. At that moment, it was awful. Fast forward, he's a sophomore, and he's amazing. He came back to the district in fifth grade. Fifth grade, we returned him, okay? Behavior issues could be handled. And I stand here, and I can see some teachers here sitting here today, they were here when he had those behavior issues. They know exactly what I went through. And I know your behavior side, I know your staff, I have worked closely with them. And I still work with them today, and it's because of them that he is where he is today, hands down. So I know that there was a team in place years ago that can take care of their teachers and maintain the safety that this district needs. And that needs to be implemented again so that the kids that have the behavior issues can come forward to be better human beings in this world. But I do not accept any more teachers getting hurt and any more littles getting hurt. I won't repeat what everybody else said here tonight, but I just drove 30 minutes to say I agree wholeheartedly with them. And I'm the one where you guys kicked my kid out. Fast forward, I'm okay with that, but there was a plan in place.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Just a final comment, I feel like she just very bravely and beautifully told us what all of our plan can be starting tomorrow. We can't hire staff starting tomorrow morning, but we can start following the discipline code. We can start following the handbook. And when students put their hands on anyone else, they can be suspended. IEPs are not, I'm a former special education teacher. They can be suspended as well. We need to start putting safety first. So I think she just gave us an answer for how we can start tackling this issue. Thank you.
The next board meeting is scheduled for October 14. I don't know if that's two weeks. It's there about, it's not, it's more like three weeks. My- my commitment would, we just need to get together and meet to at least give a report of either action taken or not taken at the next board meeting, that I will commit to. And I invite you back to that meeting to hear. We just need time to get together to agree on- on actions and- and consider that. Yes ma'am?
I would just like to follow up and address the fact that Dr. Finnerty, you're emailing me saying that there is miscommunication going on in the community. Our students, our teachers, our parents have valid concerns. They are not being addressed. When I first met with you last week, everything was rainbows and butterflies, with you and with the brand-new principal. It took follow-up, follow-up pushing and letting you know I'm not going anywhere, for you to admit that, or actually even partly acknowledge that there is a problem. There are parents, students, teachers, we are not, excuse my French, dumb here. I could read between the lines in our meeting. You're giving me data and statistics about the number of- of kids in, that are enrolled, and the birth rate going down, and this and that. I pulled my child out of school because he feels unsafe. We are now at the point of, you've been reactive for way too long, it's now time to step in and be proactive. Thank you.
Let me jump you and go to Jim, he had his hand up.
I have a quick question. I'm not familiar with RBT, since that was only an agenda. And their role assumes to help these children who are struggling and who are acting out in plans and things like that. What is the vetting, I guess you can't come, I guess what I would want to know, and this leads to the transparency, what is the vetting process? What is the process of making sure that these are the right individuals, adequately trained and adequately equipped to handle these children, and not taking them into the gym and letting them be on a mat, handing them a lollipop, and telling them back to the classroom, where everybody else just learned, oh, if I act crazy, I get a lollipop and I get to come back to school.
Thanks, Jim. It's actually a certification, they earn the certification that they've met, the training.
Taking the time to schedule an individual meeting with any parent who came up to talk, I would respectfully decline, because I think the time would be far better spent trying to look at things from a bigger picture. I'm only one person of the entire school district, and the entire school is facing the exact same problem. One meeting, which is not going to solve any problem, other than just repeating the exact same thing that's been said. I think that a follow-up should be, that that time spent should be spent communicating with the board and communicating externally to the rest of us via email, or to some kind of public announcement of what steps are being taken as they're happening, and not waiting weeks of time without us knowing what's going on, where our kids are getting sent to school, and how it must be the next news headline. So that, and I'd also like to say that the teachers being transparent, the ones that have happened, are the saving grace and the ones that are going to, that have made sure that our students will be kept safe. And I can probably speak for everybody in here, that if they were to ever get reprimanded for that, there would also be a big uproar in that case too. Because I think-
So thank you for the comment. The reason that I am offering the individual is because that allows us to talk specifically about your child, and not in general terms, so we can actually talk specifically about your child and your experiences, and what's happening in that particular classroom, and what that arc looks like, hopefully in a positive direction. So that's the reason I'm offering that. I'm not offering that exclusive of other things, but that, I- I've found that, that getting people, getting people, whether it's individual, small groups around a table, is a great way to surface obstacles, have clear communication, and also, like, in instances where, like, we- we don't want to talk past each other, we want to make sure that I fully understand what you're saying, and you fully understand what I- what I'm saying, and that we can kind of communicate clearly.
Right, I understand, but I think that there isn't anything that I, that I, having known, like, it's not an individualized experience, this is now kind of a systematic capability, and a kind of like a top-down review, that we're not the ones that need to be handled. Because anything I say is going to be exact, unless there was a misunderstanding from anybody that spoke today to the board tonight, unless there was some sort of disconnect, I don't think that there honestly is any positive light to anything that's been said. I don't think there is a positive spin on what is happening to any one of our students, and I don't want to hear a positive spin.
Yeah, I- I'm not interested in a positive spin, I'm interested in genuine conversation. So that's, so, like, one of the things, like, and again, this is a difficult venue to kind of address some things that have been said, but I have not, and I don't know that any of my administrators have ever direct, I can't imagine that they have, have directed, hey, we don't want to talk about this, we do want to surface it, we do want to talk about it. And, and the other piece, the other thing is that, that we do involve the code of conduct, and, again, I- I feel like, I feel like everyone's individual experience is significant important, that's why I'm offering that. It is also true that we do suspend significantly, and actually, we're being in, the state has been investigating us for over-suspension of students, that is a fact.
They'll all show up to that evening.
Yeah.
That's the next step, they're aware of that. But, and I just want to-
Yes, just a follow-up on what Dr. Finnerty just said, that you've had these one-on-one conversations with parents before, and you've found success in them, so are you saying that had it not been for those, this crowd would be even larger? Because it seems like they have not been that productive if we're here today, following up on this thing that has been followed up on, and has been followed up on at this point. So I'm confused as to where the productivity of those one-on-one conversations have, because clearly, we needed a larger forum.
So, what-
Have you had also been denied one-on-one conversations with my parents in the past?
Okay. So, again, one of the things that we- we can talk about, and I think the most productive, well, let me back up. I've- I've been in education a long time, and one of the most, well, I will say that the most productive thing that I ever do is to facilitate conversations with the right people around the table. And we talk in genuine terms, make sure that we surface any obstacle, and come up with a solution. So, that, so exactly, well, let- let me finish. So one of the things that- that I've, that I've asked the Rocks team is to do that. So, and again, this could be a very long conversation, I'm not sure that it's, that it's productive. Like, when we meet with the board, my admin team, including, including building leadership, we come up with, hey, this is what we think would be a good support for X. So like, one of the examples, so, and again, I don't, I don't want to go through the whole thing, but we've, we've been aware of some behavioral concerns, so what we've done is, we've added two special ed teachers to Rocks, we've added, we've tripled the number of RBTs, we've created a new position that is designed to work with stu-, both students and teachers, and that is currently occupied by Karen Otaviano to intervene. We've, we've asked for, and the board has approved, mental health supports with a, with a outside contractor, we have tripled the number of BCBAs in the district, so there are, there are a lot of things, but we're still here. So, so the question then becomes, considering all the investments that we've made, what, what, what do we do now with our current resources to better align the resources and, and make a positive change? And what do we do, are there additional resources that we're lacking that are limiting our ability to create that positive change? And that's, that's something, I will tell you this, while I'm proud to be the superintendent, I'm, I don't believe for a second that I can do this alone. Like, this is, it's about getting the right people around the table, making sure that everybody understands that, you know what, we, we, we surface issues, we have a bias towards action. Like, let's not fall in love with the problem, let's, let's, but let's come up with what's our best solution, let's try it, and let's keep monitoring and see what, does that have a positive impact? I will tell you, that we, when we were entering this year, we felt very great, we felt really good about the investments that we made in, in serving our emotional support classroom that rocked by, by adding two teachers and splitting up the emotional support, adding an additional RBT, and adding the position that Karen Otaviano occupies. We felt like we were, we were in great shape, and I think they're all good, I, but we're here.
And I agree with you.
Yep.
I think that this is something you'll be able to solve on your own. But what I think what we've heard is that, you know, thinking of the, we've heard a great presentation talking about how strong of a financial situation the, the school board, the school district is in right now, hearing from multiple people talking about how, you know, they're hearing that faculty is worried about retaliation, how we're hearing about suppressing of information going out to parents, whether it's true or not, right?
Right.
So, I would suggest, as a possible course of action for the board, an independent investigation from a third party to come in, speak with teachers, speak with faculty, speak with administration, and find out, are we being, are we blind to something, or to some resolution? And have a third party come in who doesn't have to worry about retaliation, or suppression, or anything else, because, to your point, we've done a lot of things, but we're still here, let's do something outside the box. That would be my recommendation to the board.
Thank you. There's three hands shed in the room, there, Frank here, and I will come, let me do it in order, I see one online. Did you have something here? I thought I saw your hand go up.
If it was that myself, I was going to echo the same comment, and I hear a lot of stories about resources, 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 but I never hear how you're measuring success. I hear you're just throwing resources at the same problem. I heard this parent talk about, she asked for a one-on-one with you, and you threw statistics at her, and never actually got to that one-on-one experience. I don't have very much confidence in what I'm hearing from you, so again, I echo my sentiments to the board, when it comes time for your contract renegotiation, I would recommend a vote of no confidence. You leave behind me also, once it be-
Let me go to Frank first, who had his hand up.
My, yeah, my recent comment kind of-
It pertains to their other conversation, I- I will say it was privy to one of the meetings with you, sir, and there was no reasonable outcome that came of it, so maybe you've had better success with other meetings.
Oh, there was one thing suggested, it was pulling our son out of class to meet with the guidance council.
Yeah. So beyond that, I think we've heard a lot of comments today, it really sounds like those football field dollars could be used better, just final call.
Thank you. Over here, there was a comment, ma'am?
Thank you, and I'm so sorry for speaking again, I almost promised that this will be the last time. I think there are worse things than parents caring this much than speaking up, so thank you for all of your time, I'm sure that many of you would rather be doing other things right now, but we are here because our babies mean more than anything to us. And Dr. Finnerty, I wasn't going to bring this up when I was speaking earlier, because I was trying to keep all of my speech to a very general sense, but now with the way some of the feedback has been relayed, I feel more uncomfortable now at the end of this meeting than I did when we all started speaking, because what I am hearing is a lot of, okay, but we already have X, Y, and Z. I also had an opportunity, I, I'm happy to hear you, I already had a meeting with you following the last time I spoke at a board meeting, and the things that I was told were, I was getting misinformation. If we look at the specific incident reports, many of which from Rocks were not filed due to the situation with Mrs. Matt's last year, so the majority of incidents that were occurring were not even reported, and you told me, as a parent, that a lot of the blame was on teachers. So now I think we are past the point. Dr. Finnerty, I was told that a lot of the teachers do not know how to handle these behaviors, and if they had more training before the behaviors escalated. If that wasn't something that you didn't want shared at a board meeting, it shouldn't have been shared with a parent at a one-on-one meeting.
I'm going to jump in here. I appreciate hearing comments and talk about what's going on, and the unacceptability of what's going on. I just ask that we keep personal attacks one-on-one, if we could.
I know, that wasn't my intention.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical of you or of anyone in the room, but give us a chance to respond to this, and then if you want to attack me, attack me. Yes? Jeff, there's a, online?
One from Amanda Kubik, she wants you to make it one-week timeline for response back from the board. And an anonymous attendee is saying, this is not a question, but a statement, please consider what staff members are available in the district, who can support Ms. Myers and the teachers and staff in a disciplinary capacity immediately.
Amanda, thank you. I, if we can do one week, that'd be lovely, I can't, I will not commit to that. I-
It's for the safety of our children.
I understand that, and, and, and I hear that.
We want to have a fast solution, we want to know what progress is being made at the very beginning, not that we have definitive answers and like an entire game plan put in place, but that it is a conversation that's being had, and that it's something that's being addressed, and that there is at least some, something to report on, even if it's not a final solution, but that attention was being brought to it.
And to you, that means what in terms of time?
I think within a week, it would be fair to send out an email to the parents of the district, transparent with what has occurred over the past week, from this meeting going forward to this one next week.
Will you give me time, we are meeting at the end of this meeting, give me time to talk with the other nine members of this board, and we will at least get back an email through the school of saying what we see is the next steps, and what we see is reasonable. I hear the time pressure, you have little kids that you should be worried about, and I am not trying to delay it, I just need to talk, we need to talk and see how we can get it moving, as, and I hear the urgency. So, yes, Frank? Jim?
Last question I have, I'll take your reading out of there every week, I'll take a meeting with anybody, but in transparency, I will share your meeting with anybody and everybody, so there's no more permission, information. Well, I'd like to know, and I would like answers when I have my meeting with whoever it is, is, I want to know where responsibility falls, I want, I want to know, when I meet with whoever, what is being done to hold the parents or annual guardians of these children responsible? Because myself as a parent, I know, and I was born going back to school night, that if I don't have my absences incorrectly, and I don't have my kids there incorrectly, children, youth knocking on my door, why are they out of school? So I want to know, to the same aspect, these children who are the re-curring troubled youth, and my, I have a 14-year-old son in North Penn School District, my son, just like this young lady here, went through a lot of troubles, his mom moved a few times, changed school districts, he's doing good now, he, he got a plan, he has an IP, he got help. I know it's not all the kids, but sometimes the parents need to take ownership. And I want to know, when I have my meetings, what district, I know you can't give specifics, I don't want names, I don't want anything like that, I just want, what's the plan? How are we holding those parents accountable, the same way that we're held accountable for missing absences, or our kids not being at school? What are, what are we doing to those children, and how are we holding those parents accountable as well?
Jeff?
This is a comment from Pamela Burnett, regarding communication, parents should be notified what happens in the classroom, administration should support teachers in this communication, this can start immediately, you must be transparent.
So the plan, in my mind at least, is I, I will, we, the ten of us will be meeting at the conclusion of this- conclusion of this meeting. We can, we'll work to see if we can get action steps that we can communicate immediately as to what steps we're going to take. Does that make sense? And that's doable within a week, if it's not doable within a day. I mean, I don't want to make excuses for, we're all busy, but we're talking about your children.
I can't wait for them to speak repeatedly to someone else.
Well.
We appreciate it.
And ma'am, did you have a comment? Did you just came in, or were you?
I did.
You're right, yes.
Um, to Dr. Finerty's point of having the right players at the table, I just want to make it clear, like, I'm very involved in the community, and these are the people I see everywhere. We are involved in the athletic, within the community, not just the school, we're everywhere. So, we are the players that are at the table, and we're coming to you, just begging, just begging.
Thank you. I think that's been heard, speaking for the other people at the table. I think it's been heard pretty loudly. Anything else? I'm going to take a five-minute break before resuming the board meeting. For those of you who want to reach out to anyone individually or one-on-one, we'll begin, what time is it?
Eight forty-six.
Eight forty-six. We'll begin the board meeting again at eight fifty-one. Thank you for being here. We'll begin in thirty seconds.
All right, thank you. So, this is just a short report. We did get acknowledgement by the Pennsylvania Positive Behavior Support Network, that they are, and I'm reading directly from them, "We're pleased to report that all of our elementary schools and our middle school met criteria for implementing school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports with fidelity for the 24-25 school year." This is, that's what PBAS means, Positive Behavior Intervention Support. It's about making sure that we're acknowledging the positive behaviors that students are making and encouraging students who are making, who are struggling with some decision-making to make more positive decisions. So, congratulations to all four schools and the people that were involved in that process. This is not an insignificant thing, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Finerty. Moves us to agenda item six, receiving of accounts for audit, the high school, middle school, and cafeteria accounts.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the high school student activities, middle school student activities, and the cafeteria accounts for August 2025 as presented.
Second.
Move in a second to approve the high school, middle school, and cafeteria accounts for August 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item seven, treasurer's report. It's approval of the August 25 treasurer's report.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the August 2025 treasurer's report and present it and file it for audit.
Second.
As presented and filed for audit.
Motion is second to approve the August 25 treasurer's report as presented and file it for audit. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number eight.
Jay?
Yes.
We are missing two members. Are they coming back? Does anybody know?
I just, we'll just know you guys started, so.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion, under action items, we approve eight point one through eight point nine.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve eight point one through eight point nine. To just review these, eight point one is retirement of one teacher, a change in the date of resignation for our school psychologist that had been pre-approved. Eight point two is the approval of leave of absences for two support staff and one teacher. Eight point three, a change in assignments for two support staff. Eight point four, one support staff resignation. Eight point five, there are ten support staff appointments. Eight point six, fourteen positions for approval, eleven at lower. One of them is a correction to salary that was previously approved. Three at the high school, two is a change in salary, and one is a rescind of the position that had been previously approved. Eight point seven is five supplemental staff for the Potzakrove SOAR program. Eight point eight is the approval of one staff member for assistant in behavioral support for our evening academy. And eight point nine is the approval of two teachers for homebound instruction. Any comments or discussion on any of those items? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's pass. Agenda item nine, contract approval. This is approving moving forward with just the design process for the stadium improvement project. It is not for the full amount of thirteen million, six hundred thousand, but is for an amount that we are not sure of the exact amount yet. Is that correct?
So, this is for the approval of the design. So, the thirteen point six is a price of one concept of the design.
That was the estimate.
Yes, yes. So, what you would be approving with a, with a positive vote of this would just be the design, the design team moving forward, and the contract is still subject to review by our solicitor.
Yeah, you would be approving the, the two contracts, one with the construction manager, one with the architect. They are subject to review. The maximum cost would be the thirteen six. We fully anticipate that number coming down. You would retain the discretion to lower the, or reduce the scope of the project and thereby lowering the cost through the, through the design development process.
So, to be clear, there's another decision point once the design process is finished?
Correct.
We could choose not to move forward?
Well, the, the agreements would have termination provisions, but you could, you would have the option of reducing the scope of the project or abandoning the project under the, under the agreements.
The thirteen five or thirteen six price tag, do I understand correctly that built into that was approximately one point five of contingencies that might add to the cost, or is that one point five supposed to be in addition to the thirteen six?
Thirteen six is all-inclusive, is that right, Mr. Lang?
Correct. That's what I thought, okay. So, because I saw some reference to thirteen six with a, an additional of one point five could be added, but it was really the one point fives added already into that thirteen six. Yep, okay, thank you for clarifying. Got it.
With that said, I would like to make a motion, we approve nine point one, the contract approval.
Motion in a second to approve the contract for moving forward with the design process. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item nine point two is approving a contract with General Healthcare Resources to provide substitute nursing services.
I would like to make a motion, we approve nine point two along with nine point three.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve nine point two and nine point three. Nine point two is the substitute nursing services, and nine point three is a communication system in our three elevators at the middle school, high school, and at lower. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda nine point four is the creation of an athletics Instagram account.
I would like to make a motion, we approve nine point four.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the creation of athletics Instagram account. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item ten is the approval of the additional targeted support and improvement plan for the high school. This is required, the plan is required because the high school has been identified as an additional targeted support and improvement school.
I would like to make a motion, we approve ten point one.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve ten point one, the approval of the plan for the additional targeted support and improvement for the high school. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item ten point two is the approval of a contract with Camp Hill Special School for services to IEP, Free Appropriate Public Education students.
I would like to make a motion, we combine and approve ten point one with ten point three.
Ten point two?
Oh, ten point two and ten point three, thank you.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve ten point two, agreement with Camp Hill Special School, and ten point three, which is conference attendance for one staff member at the high school, dual enrollment annual training for German at the University of Pittsburgh. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motions pass. Agenda item eleven point one, report of the Operations Finance Committee from September nine. I imagine that's Ron? Louis?
I could do that.
At the September ninth meeting, we discussed the athletic stadium proposal and the concepts, and at-
and at tonight's meeting, we just approved those contracts. And that's always done at the meeting.
Any questions on Ron's report? The report will be voted on at the October 14th school board meeting. 11.2, report of the September 16th Athletics Co-Curricular and Community Relations Committee, Patty and Steve.
Steve and Che is going to carry on.
Thank you. So we had a very productive meeting on Tuesday, September 16th. The first discussion was basically an update on our Market Street Sports, which is revenue we gained for a third party regarding advertising on some of our facilities. We discussed where those dollars were, what fund they were put in. There was a conversation by Mrs. Grimm, should we have a process of how do we allocate that money? We decided during that time we're going to table that. Mrs. Ruiz Brown also indicated maybe we can use something regarding teacher mini-grants. Some further discussion created out of it as of right now. I think we're going to keep it as is. But I know, Mrs. Grimm, every committee meeting, we'd like a report of where we are from a Market Street regarding how many dollars our district is bringing in. The next thing we discussed was ticket prices for 2026-27. Just like anything, prices continue to rise. The cost of officials continue to rise. So I am suggesting for the 26-27 school year to make ticket prices a five-dollar flat fee. Right now, adults are $5, students are $3. That would make us on point with 50% of a Pioneer Athletic Conference regarding what they charge for ticket prices, but that will help us offset some of our official costs that continue to rise yearly within the state. The other thing we talked about was let the committee know that for the eighth year in a row, our high school athletic department was awarded, not only, well, high school athletic department was awarded the Pioneer Athletic Conference Sportmanship Award in District 1. We rewarded this. Thank you. Eighth year in a row, but this is a credit again to our department, our coaches, our student athletes, and our parents. It's a team effort. Winning this eight years in a row is just not by design, but what we do on a daily basis. So I'm very happy for that. Also gave a quick recap on our fall sports, where we are, participation numbers. I also noted many of the community events that we do. I highlighted our first responder military appreciation night, our Future Falcons youth night, and our most recent 2025 Athletic Hall of Fame that we had this past Saturday. Ray Goffis, Emily Glennecke, Joe Bell, Terrell Chestnut, and our 2009 football team were inducted into the Hall of Fame. PCTV recorded that, which I know Ms. Kleinfeldter just recently posted on our district Facebook. And I will say, from bringing our alumni back, and you want to talk about community involvement and a feel-good moment, it was, it was a great day on Saturday to bring everybody back. We have families and alumni that come back that have never, have never seen our renovation. So you walk them through the school, and they are just taken back. They're looking at the pictures, they're looking at the record boards, and very good feel-good moment for Pots Grove. And we're happy to continue to run that. And I also appreciate the support of the board for funding our Athletic Hall of Fame. Moving to co-curriculars, we just gave a quick update of our SOAR programs that are up and running. Mrs. Ruiz Brown asked regarding how those programs are created. Are they started by students? Are they started by kids? How does that work at each level? So we had a group conversation of how that's created. It's created by both students finding, like wanting to run a club, finding an advisor and leading it at the high school, or the advisor wanting to run the club and find the kids. One of the questions was asked, can we send out a survey to kind of generate maybe what additional clubs might students be interested at the middle school level? Because sometimes it's harder for those students to take that initiative right away versus a high school student. So Mrs. Kleinfeldter, they're working on a survey that's going to be sent out to our students regarding potential interest in clubs, and that'll allow us to generate some information to see if we could or can offer additional clubs through our SOAR programs within Pots Grove School District. Okay? Turning it over to Mrs. Kleinfeldter for communications.
Thank you. Okay, for communications, we discussed Pots Grove climate surveys. These surveys will be distributed to parents, students, staff as part of our commitment to strengthen the school culture and get feedback from everyone. So those will be sent out shortly. We also discussed the giant, the giant flu and COVID vaccine clinic that we are partnering with Giant with, that will be held October 9th in the high school cafeteria. We will be sending out information on that to the community, and that has been an ongoing partnership throughout the past several years. We also discussed, Mr. Ozbach and I both have student interns this year. They have been a great help to our departments. Mr. Ozbach's interns help him with various responsibilities in the athletic department, and my current intern helps collect content and just enhance our social media posts. Next, we discussed the district's transition to school messenger over the summer. We had talked about, an additional communication went out early in September to families who were not able to opt into the text messaging originally. Another reminder will be sent out in October to ensure that everybody has a chance to opt in. And lastly, we discussed a social media recap. Our followers' reach and views on Instagram and Facebook continue to grow, so we are trending in the right direction in that regard, and I appreciate the support for the athletic Instagram account from the board tonight.
And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Shadine, Steve, and Patty. The minutes of the report will be on the October 14 agenda for approval. Agenda item 11.3, report of the Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee, Jim and Daniel.
Good evening. So at our September 16th CIT committee meeting, we had a number of topics that we discussed. The first was the youth aid panel at our high school. We are investigating entering a memorandum of understanding with the Assistant District Attorney's Office of Montgomery County to operate a school-based youth aid panel. This is a restorative justice initiative that would allow juveniles to avoid a criminal record. So there's a number of next steps that are being taken in this area. This includes a presentation that occurred to high school staff yesterday, actually. We will be, need to update the student handbook, of course, sharing of the information of the program with students as well as families, and then, of course, training that would need to occur for the high school staff that will be involved by the Assistant District Attorney. We also provided an update on some of the goal work that we're doing in the district. In September, we talked about instructional coaching. I'll talk about that briefly in a minute. Our October meetings will be focused on co-teaching and multiple, multi-tiered system of supports, while November will focus on curriculum alignment and student achievement. So if any of those concepts or topics interest you, join us in the CIT committee. We have a lot of fun. We did talk about our instructional coaching action plan. So when we talk about instructional coaching, it's really the relationship that exists between a supervisor and his or her teacher or professional, really focused on targeted feedback and reflection, and how we use that feedback and reflection to become better at our craft. So in order to get some additional information, we did initiate a survey among our staff to learn some more. As of today, there were 142 responses to that survey, and we plan to bring that back to the CIT committee once complete with patterns and trends there. The wonderful Mr. Bitler provided an update on some of the massive amounts of work that occurred within the technology department over the summer. This included Power School ERP, Linkit, Chromebooks, iPads for the elementary crew, some staffing updates, as well as a long list of upcoming and future projects that need to occur in technology. And finally, we talked about one of our favorite topics in CIT, which is personal finance becoming a requirement within Pennsylvania, and really looking there at our next steps, including updating some policies. If you were up policy tonight, you heard Dr. Lucas talk about some updates that will need to occur to policies later on in the school year in preparation for that next year, reviewing some staffing needs that might exist, updating the program of studies, and of course, creating the new course proposals so that all of you can approve that probably around the November, December timeline. Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel and Jim. And as with the other two committee meetings, the minutes of this committee will be on the agenda of the October 14 board meeting for our approval. Moves us to agenda item 12, new business. Let me start from my left with Louis.
Sorry. I know most of the parents that were here are not here anymore, and, you know, I don't know who's still online, but I do want to say, you know, we as school board members are elected to represent the community. And it's not the circumstances I would want to hear from the community under, but I'm glad that we had an opportunity to hear from the community, because at the end of the day, we're here to, you know, to represent the community. And when they get involved, and when they express their opinions, and when they provide feedback, that's when things happen, so.
Jim? Ashley?
I do agree also with Louis and Jim, and I want to thank all the parents and the teachers that came out, because it's an important issue and it needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Nothing from me. Dr. Finney?
Nothing from me.
Bill?
Nothing from me.
Patty?
Just real quick, I would like to thank Steve Ozbach for all of his hard work. Saturday was a highlight of a whole year wrapped up, having the 2025 Athletic Hall of Famers come in. It's a whole process, because we have a committee, and we have coaches in there, we have athletic directors, past athletic directors, and everybody comes in, well, who are we going to vote now? And we have an ongoing list, and there is so much detail that takes us almost a whole year. I don't know what we would do without Steve. So sometimes I see when we have events, instead of using little, little events, and you have a major event like this, it just brought everybody back home. And hearing the kids' stories, well, they're men now, seeing how they were all bald, but they weren't when they came here. That was like, yeah, I know, the class of 2009. But it was such an uplifting, and I'd like to thank Gus for always being supportive of the school district and being there. So if you do get a chance, everybody go watch it, because it's just so uplifting. So that's all.
Thank you, Patty. Tanya?
I don't want to parrot exactly what Louis and all you said, but I absolutely agree as well. And then, two things to note, to legislative meeting should happen first week of next month, so hopefully I'll get more information in terms of where the budget stands and what's going on there. Well, hopefully we get some answers. And then also on a more local, lighthearted tone, the West Pots Grove PTA, I believe it's Friday, is the Glow Dance, right? Six to eight. Okay, I got that right. So if you, if you're free, feel free to stop by and have some fun and meet the PTA there. And that's all I have right now.
Tanya, thank you. Anique?
I just wanted to say I agree with Louis and, again, on a lighthearted point, this past Saturday, I went to my first competition, our marching band, a cavalcade at Phoenixville. And all the schools were great, but our school was awesome. They were so good. And they're actually having another one in Boyertown, Boyertown High School. So if anyone wants to go and support our marching band, that is this Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you, Anique. Stacy?
Yes, I just want to thank everyone for coming out as well. I know it's difficult to come here and speak, so we appreciate that. And also on a lighter note, I just wanted to wish my son Timothy a happy birthday today. I'll probably be home a little after he's in bed, so happy birthday.
Thank you, Stacy. Ron, anything?
Although the state has not passed a budget, this is not unfamiliar territory for us. This happened a few years ago, prior to COVID, when the state passed a budget eight or nine months late. The district was fine at that point. The only thing that we are taking a hit on right now is our interest income, because we don't have any state aid sitting in the bank account earning interest. So as of now, we're okay, but come February, maybe story may change. We need to encourage our legislators to hammer out a budget.
Thank you, Ron. Leads us to agenda item 13, which is our second public comment of the night. Is there anything that anyone in the room has for a comment? Seth, you're shaking your head, nothing online. Or Jeff is looking. Or Seth. The Operations and Finance Committee is meeting on Tuesday, October 14 at 6:00, chaired by Louis. The next board meeting is on the same day, Tuesday, October 14 at 7:00 here. Move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Moved.
Meeting is adjourned.